Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Wareham School Committee. Today is Thursday, October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by WCTV. There's also an audio recording being made by Mrs. Wickston, and there is a Zoom link open. It's not a hybrid link. Access to the meeting is not available tonight due to circumstances beyond our control, but WCTV is kind enough to have a Zoom link open. So if anyone wants to join that way, you are able to. And we will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. First on the agenda is public participation. I don't see anyone in the audience who is here to address the committee. So we will move on to the next item, which is good news. Is there anyone who would like to share some good news? Anyone? Dr. Schwan?
I have some COVID-related good news.
Okay.
If that's proper time to share. But first, good news is that we are set up for test and stay. And if a close contact is identified, we'll call the team, and they will come to the school and begin the process. So we're in good standing with that. And the second bit of information has to do with, I had made some calls about how we could possibly offer testing to our staff and how much that would cost. And basically, Massachusetts has given CIC and Elevation Health sort of a carte blanche where we can test as many people as we would like to test within the school at any time. So we have the capacity to set up weekly testing. We just need to communicate with the Elevation Health so that they can send the people.
Okay, great. Thank you. I just know, go ahead.
Just to be clear. So our school nurses would not be burdened with actually performing the test?
Not, no, they have been completely out of it. The only thing they're responsible for is identifying and communicating close contact. That's it.
Thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to share that I've seen that the Wareham Fire Department has been visiting, not just visiting, but helping out with professional development for the teachers at DUCUS, but also visiting mine at NDCUS. And I think it's so great that these kids have this, you know, that they're taking the time out to visit the kids, and it's great for the kids, not only during the school day, but the relationships that they're forming with these firemen who live in their community, which is really important. So I love to see that partnership between the Fire Department and the schools. So really appreciate their visits. And we'll move on to the next item, which is the report from our student representative, Adrienne.
I'll start with what students are probably looking forward to most this week, which is homecoming. It's being held this Friday, or this Saturday, the sixteenth, from six to nine PM. It'll be right up front, Wareham High School, just outside. There will be, there's currently a tent set up with a dance floor. And I believe there'll be stands for snacks and drinks so students don't have to bring their own stuff in. Court and royalty will be announced around eight fifteen. A form was sent out from Mrs. Medina for students to nominate students for that. Next will be yearbook. Senior photos are due in January. They've been collecting them, reaching out to students, reaching out to seniors. And then baby photos are also being submitted. And then family and business advertisements, those will be due, I believe, late December. And the prices vary, but they can go towards senior dues. So that'll be a good way for students to knock down the price that they have to pay for diplomas and gowns at the end of the year. Next will be Key Club, which has a lot. They will be doing a mine at AV cleanup on October twenty-ninth after school from around, I believe it was two fifteen to four thirty PM. And they'll be cleaning up from mine at to the apartment buildings, which are right down the street. I forget the name of it. And then trunk retreat at onset is at, well, at onset. It'll be held on October thirtieth. And then Halloween at Bridge Church the next day. And then they'll have other recycling or other volunteering opportunities, like at the recycling center here in town. And they'll be donating coats to students or kids around town in need. Next is Astronomy Night, which I heard had a very large showing. It was two nights ago, right outside of Wareham High School, I believe, hosted by Mr. Navarro. And they were able to see Jupiter and Saturn. Senior night, or senior class, sorry, had Kedoba Night a couple of weeks ago, I believe. I haven't, I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I couldn't report it then. The AP kickoff we had recently, where students who are taking AP classes this year and have taken AP classes in the past were recognized. And the AP Scholar Awards were given out. So the banners were shown, and they're currently hung up in the foyer. PSATs took place yesterday in the morning. Juniors and, I believe, also sophomores took them. Homecoming tickets, I forgot to mention, sold out. We sold more than what we were aiming for. I believe two hundred forty tickets were sold. There was also a lockdown today, which did not come as a surprise as there were rumors going around all week. And then there is a new drama advisor that was hired, I believe, last week or two weeks ago, and they're currently holding auditions for new actors. And that's about it.
Excellent. Thank you. Since our last meeting, I attended a school council meeting at the high school. And I know that you and Mr. Palladino, I think you were there, talked about the E-Hol Pass. Were you there when he was talking about that?
We talked about it two meetings ago
Okay.
on the school committee, but I haven't been to another meeting for it.
Right. Well, no, I just wanted to say at this school council meeting, one is, there were teachers there, and they were asked how they felt about it. And one teacher said, "It's the best thing ever." And he's not sure where it's been his whole life. So apparently, it's a hit with everyone, so.
Students, I feel like we have been getting used to the new E-Hol Pass system. It is still a little confusing at times, especially when guidance specifically requests students to be called down because teachers don't get the notification for it if they don't have the sound on their computer turned on.
Ah.
And they aren't in class to, like, raise their hand and say that they need to go down and request a student. So that's sometimes missed. But other than that, I haven't heard of any other problems. It's been pretty good.
Well, like anything that's new, I'm sure it'll take time, but yeah.
Yeah.
That's good. Jeff?
So this lockdown, I assume it was a drill?
Yeah, it was a lockdown drill.
Thank you. Okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Adrienne. We'll move on to the minutes of the meeting from August twenty-sixth. Does anyone have any questions, changes to the minutes? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Okay, so four, zero, one. Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the report from the Office of Student Services, and Melissa Fay. Good evening.
Is this working? Yes, okay. Good evening, everybody. Sorry, I forgot my mask. I've just walked in, and I went, "Oh, my goodness." So I think I'm gonna go, I haven't been in front of you guys for a while, so I wanted to kind of go back to give you updates from summer to now. Extended school year program this year was full in person, and we ran with about two hundred and ten students, which was a really good amount of students. We were a little concerned that we might have some students who had shown some regression outside of what we would normally see. So we thought that we might have more students. We did have about forty more than we would normally have, but it went very smoothly. And we were able to, with a couple of glitches here and there, got through the summer, and it was very successful. We started out the school year pretty strong. We, our programs are up and running. We've hired some really, we've been fortunate enough to hire some new staff that have come in to replace other people, and they've really hit the ground running and have participated in a lot of professional development. For our first professional development day, we were able to utilize the grant that I presented to school committee, I want to say, at some point last spring, which is in conjunction with the Fire Department, the town, and also the Police Department. And the Police Department did an amazing professional development for us, I'm sorry, on drug, recognizing the effects of drugs and alcohol with students, and also trauma-informed care. So a lot of our nurses and guidance counselors participated in that professional development, and they really enjoyed it. And we really appreciated the Police Department coming down and doing that for us. Well, it was virtual, but we appreciated them taking the time. And they also spent a lot of extra time answering questions for our staff, which I thought was a little bit of extra great thing that they did for us. I apologize, I'm getting over a cold, so I'm a little raspy. So the professional development day went great. All Cape Day, a lot of our special ed and related service people went to All Cape Day and participated in their content specific professional development, which was great. So a lot of our nurses gave a lot of good feedback about the professional development that they attended. Currently, we're up to, we've had a lot of new enrollments that are special education students. So we've been just trying to make sure that everybody's settled, has everything that they need. We're up to close to five hundred and ninety-four students right now that are special education students in our district, with probably about another fifty to fifty-five in queue to be evaluated for an initial evaluation. So our numbers are, continue to get stronger. And I wasn't here because I was traveling for the last school committee meeting, so I wanted to make sure that nobody had any questions about our tiered focus monitoring review, which was the report that you all received at the last school committee meeting. And it's the old coordinated program review. They now call it the tiered focus monitoring review. So I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has about that or anything else.
Does anyone have any questions? Mary?
When you're doing the team meetings for these referrals, are you taking into consideration that these students, many of them have been out of school for a length of time?
Yeah, we've had a lot of referrals, and we did a lot of training at the beginning of the year with our staff on recognizing that. So, and it is a difficult process to go through. I think this year has been tougher than any other year that I've been here, in the fact that we're seeing more referrals that turn out to really be regression versus a disability. So we are able to put some interventions in place to support those students. But it really, we haven't seen a tremendous amount. A lot of the initial referrals we have are coming in at the preschool level, coming out of early intervention. So those we expect, and I think that we're just having a lot of move-ins because our enrollment is going up. So we've got a lot of families moving into the area with young children. So it's to be expected that our referrals are going to go up at that age group. But we haven't had maybe ten to fifteen where we've really had to sit back and identify, is it regression because of COVID, or is it a true disability?
And have you had many where you are finding that you have to provide competent, you know, services?
So over the course of COVID, we have written, because we all went to training, and we went to the DESI training. And then we had another training that we attended that was a private training. We wrote, I believe, six COVID compensatory plans district-wide. So I thought that that was pretty good.
Yeah, that's not bad.
Yeah.
That's not bad. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you tell us what our overall percentage of special ed students is in the district right now?
We're still hovering around twenty-four percent.
Twenty-four percent?
Yeah.
How does that compare to the state average?
State average is eighteen to nineteen percent.
Okay.
We've always, as long as I've been here, we've always been higher.
April?
You mentioned the summer program, there were a few glitches. Can you elaborate what those were?
COVID. You know, we would have, you know, a child come in, you know, and I'd be identified that somebody at home had COVID, and then we'd have to kind of quarantine a group, so.
Okay.
It was very flexible. And we were able to kind of work around it. So if students missed a part of extended school year, because we have a five-week program and a six-week program, we were able to slide those kiddos who may have missed out into that sixth week to make up for it. So everybody got their services. We just had to do a little shifting. COVID kind of threw some wrenches at us. But I think overall, I mean, our school nurse that worked in the summer, which is Danielle Ambrose, did a fabulous job making sure that she was tracking everything, the tracing, contacting families. And it went, I think, as smoothly as it could have gone, given the circumstances.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jeff?
What was the two hundred, you said, that participated?
About two hundred. And we usually don't have that many.
Right. What was the approximate grade makeup of those two hundred?
So we have a span. So our students who are in our ASD, our autism programs, go six weeks every year. We don't measure regression when we look at that sub-separate group. We know that they need that consistency of programming, so they go six weeks, no matter what. What we saw an increase in this year was our students who typically don't regress and need that extra support in the five-week program, those numbers went up this year. So most of the students that attend extended school year are typically your sub-separate students. They're usually all there, and that constitutes about a hundred students district-wide that participate. And not all students participate. Some parents opt out because they have vacations planned, and they don't, you know, they believe their kids need a break, and they think that's more important than coming to school in the summers. And I respect that, and that's their choice. But typically, we run at about ninety to a hundred students just in our sub-separate programs. And the other students are students who have shown regression, for whatever reason, over the course of the year.
And that group, that final group, what grade level were they?
It really was a spread, to be honest. And it's our, yes, like, our extended school year program in general is a pretty even spread.
From what to what?
From, usually it's around, we do have pre-K, but it's mostly our programs because it's tough to measure regression after one year. But it's usually K to R twenty-two. So our students in our adult transition programs, yeah. And it's a pretty even spread across the board.
So you had certainly plenty of middle school and high school kids?
Yes, we did.
And you measure the progress at the end?
We take benchmarks. So we take benchmarks every so often throughout the year, but also we benchmark at the beginning of ESY and then at the end to measure the regression in the areas that the team has identified that they've regressed in. So, for example, reading, math, and we collect data all through. And then one final progress report goes out at the end of the year that measures progress over the course of the summer program.
It does measure the progress over the summer program?
Yes.
And how did you feel about that progress?
It's typically, we see, like, probably eighty percent of our kids make progress. The twenty percent, fifteen to twenty percent that we don't see a ton of progress on are usually our very severe populations. But they still need that continuity of summer programming due to their disability. So we don't expect to see a tremendous amount of growth over the summer. It's more to keep them in routine and maintain skills over the course of the summer.
It sounds like you're saying if they don't regress, that's progress.
Yeah, well, yeah. They're not, they're not going, they're not regressing, but we don't see a ton of growth over the summer with those populations. We kind of stay status quo. But they definitely need that time and that structure of coming to school in the summer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So my question is really about staff. Since the beginning of the year, there have continued to be openings for paraprofessionals, nurses, CNAs. And I'm assuming that some of that is special ed-related. I'm sure not all of it is, but some of it.
Yeah.
So how have you been able to?
It's very difficult. I feel like we've kind of become recruiters and going out and finding staff. And we've had to kind of think outside the box a little bit about how and where we post for positions because a lot of CNAs don't come to school spring to look for jobs. So we've had to kind of think outside the box and ask people, where do CNAs look for jobs so that we can find them? The CNAs that we added to support the nurses' office are mostly to kind of handle the overflow from COVID and also kind of help manage that paperwork that goes along with it so that the nurses are able to do their job. Some of the CNAs that we hired are specific to students. And unfortunately, we've had not wonderful luck hiring. We, and it's the same thing with paraprofessionals. And yes, those are all special ed positions. We found that during the unemployment benefit time, it was very difficult. People would sign up for interviews, and we'd get a team together, and nobody would show up. So we wasted an entire chunk of time from a couple of staff who were there to take the time to interview folks. And speaking to other directors in the area, it's common. That's been happening a lot. I'm hoping that now that'll start to turn around. But we still, we still have some positions that we need to fill, but it's been very difficult.
Yeah, and I'm just thinking about what effects that would have on the students.
The paraprofessionals support the teachers in the classroom. We're fully staffed with paraprofessionals, but we would like, some of the classrooms could use some more support. And it certainly isn't creating any kind of a situation that is unsafe. It's just that extra set of hands. And like, one example is the Young Adult Program, the eighteen to twenty-two-year-olds. When we take them out in the community, we like our number of adult-to-student ratio to be larger because we're not in a secure building. So we're still looking to fill a position there. We have, I think, two paraprofessionals in that classroom already, along with a CNA who follows specifically one student. So there's four adults in the classroom. But when we do take a group of them that might be doing internships or working in the community, it's nice to have that extra set of eyes to support students. And also, some students need somebody to stay with them in a work environment. So, you know, the job coach takes one or two paras with her when she goes out to support the students in the community. And for me, it's the more support we have for them, the better we are.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else have any more questions?
Yes. So what do our out-of-district numbers look like right now?
Right now, we're sitting at about fifty-six. We're getting a lot of school choice kids who live in Wareham but go school choice someplace else, that those districts are not able to support them. So we're seeing a great deal of those kind of filtering back to us, which becomes difficult for us because we're the funding district. So.
Right.
We're pretty active in, and proactive in getting involved in the team meetings early on and offering our programs here as an alternative. But that, you know, again, doesn't always work out. And so, and the way that the school choice regs read, you know, we can't force a parent to come back here to go to a program if they chose to school choice someplace else. So it just becomes kind of sticky, but we're getting through it.
And the last question is, would you be able to create some sort of organizational chart where we can see what staffing looks like at the high school special ed and middle, three, four, and then the pre-K to?
Yeah, I have that chart. Do you, do you want everybody or just related services and, like, team chairs? Are you looking for, like, special education teachers?
I'm looking for everyone.
Everything.
And also, especially with the special ed teachers, their caseload too, as well?
And so it's changed up a little bit with the addition of the educational diagnosticians because the teacher's caseload looks a little bit different now. The teachers, when they had a caseload of, let's say, it depends on the level, but anywhere from ten to fifteen students on their caseload, they used to be responsible for testing those students. And that is no longer something that they need to do with the educational diagnostician there. So they're not, they don't have the same set of responsibilities. They still follow the child, support the child. But that testing and IEP piece is kind of off their plate. But I'm happy to get those numbers for you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else? Jeff?
I want to make sure I understood what you said. A parent with a student chooses to go somewhere other than Wareham, but they require services that are not part of the LEA budget in essence. So at that point, they say, "Well, I no longer want to be a school choice student. I want to be associated with Wareham, but only if you send my student somewhere else for special needs." Is that what you're saying?
No. So when a child, so let's just use an example. If you use school choice to Born, and you go to school in Born, and they decide that they can no longer support your needs, your needs go beyond what Born has programming for.
Within, within the district proper?
Within the district of Born.
Not out of district?
Not out of district.
So they have no responsibility to provide out-of-district services?
Correct. But they do have control over referring that child to an out-of-district school.
So they can refer to an out-of-district program and then say to Wareham, "It's your cost."
Yes. Yes.
I think that's heads I win, tails you lose.
That is. And it works both ways. We have, we have situations where we have students that come to us, school choice, and we have to search for an out-of-district program for them. And so it kind of flip-flops.
So what happens financially in that case? Meaning, are they still considered a school choice student?
They still are. And Christine and I had this big conversation about the other day because I'm trying to kind of understand the nuances of it. The reason why it's important for us is Circuit Breaker because we need to know, like, who gets to claim that student on Circuit Breaker because there's money being exchanged for the school choice piece, but there's also money being paid for tuition.
Right.
And so Christine actually made a phone call to ask about that so she could probably answer that question better than I can because I'm still struggling to understand what she, what. She called the department and said, "What the heck? You know, what are we supposed to do in this situation?"
So they adjust between the school choice coming in and going out. So it's adjusted at that level. So our sending kids that we pay for, it's reflected in the sending tuition. And vice versa, if they're coming to us, it's reflected in the money that we receive in. With the Circuit Breaker piece, I'm not quite sure how that, you can probably speak to that better than I can.
We're still trying to figure that piece out.
Yeah, so it's reflected in the sending tuition and the receiving tuition.
What exactly is reflected?
Depending on?
In the example that Melissa just gave us, that Born student, we would be charged on the cherry sheets for that student going out.
Correct.
Okay?
That's my understanding from the Department of Ed, yes.
Okay, that I get.
Yep.
Now the student is not educated by Born, in this case. They're educated by some special out-of-district school. Okay? So does Born lose that, do we no longer, do we stop paying for that child as a child going out?
No. We don't.
So we still have to pay for the child going out?
Yes.
And on top of that, we get a bill for the out-of-district costs?
We, I don't believe we're going to get an out-of-district cost because it's all reflective in what the tuition is that we pay out and what comes in. So in other words? So, in other words.
So, what's coming in?
Well, if we have a kid that chooses in and he need, he needs special needs of some sort, they'll adjust, you know, it's about five thousand dollars a kid for.
Uh, let's stick with just the Born example.
Yep.
Okay? We, we pay on the cherry sheets for the fact that the child is out, going out, okay? What happens to the cost of the out of district?
We're, we are responsible.
Right.
We pay the cho, the tuition to the school that has our student even though they're a school choice student. So, in essence.
I understand, but why would we also be charged for the, on this, the fact that the student is going, leaving? Because they're leaving and but they're not being educated by, by, in this case, Born.
Right, but they're still a school choice student. I know, I know.
I know, well, we were shaking our heads when I got the information.
This makes no sense.
Yeah, to the Department of Ed, so.
So, does that mean that, so you write a check to Born hypothetically for that student's tuition out of Wareham? Born can't offer them services. Does Born then transfer that tuition to whatever out of district? Because the student will stay, I get that you're not double charging the school choice. So, Born keeps that money and then we eat the cost to send them out of district is essentially what you're saying?
They adjust the cost of the school choice.
Yeah, they adjust.
So, it negates itself?
It might, it depends on the circumstance.
Mary, do you have an answer?
Well, my understanding is that, because I deal with this all the time with the charter schools, is that after October first, I get phone calls that these children cannot stay here any longer because that's the deadline for claiming them, is my understanding.
So, you're saying they wait until they get counted and then they send them.
That's right.
Back.
Yep.
For the school choice money.
To say I'm not satisfied with this situation is an understatement. If, if you could continue your research, I would appreciate that.
You got it.
Thank you.
Melissa, do we, excuse me, do we have some say in, like, would you work in that Born example with Born special needs staff? And, and about placement, do we have some say in that at that point?
So, when we're brought to the table, they're supposed to, it's not written into law, but it's just ethically sound for them to ask us to come to the table as we have an interest in the child because they live in our town and we'd be funding the placement. So, you know, and, and we're always, we attend the meetings either myself or the out of district coordinator to make sure that they know about the programming that we have here so that that's an option on the table for parents. So, I would say seventy-five percent of the time, we're called to the meetings. And then there's times when we're not. There's times when we find out about it and have to kind of push our way into a meeting. But, you know, we have to, to support our interests here, so. And, and really, at the end of the day, they, that district is programmatic, so they make the programmatic decisions. So, we can go and give our feedback as part of the team. But, that's about where we stand. And it is very upsetting and doesn't seem right, but it's just the way that it is.
April?
Do you find that when you are in those meetings with the families that may have chosen school choice for whatever their reasons, are you finding that they school choice because they were unaware of the programs that we offer? Or they just weren't pleased with the programs that we offer as their reason for school choice?
In the, we have about five cases that we've dealt with just in this school year that are in this exact situation. And these are families that have been out of district for many, many, many years. Like families that have, even in the five years that I've been here, I've never had the student in any of my programs. So, I'm not sure when the choice was made. I'd have to go back and look for them to school choice to another district. But the students, the five students that we're dealing with currently are all students that have been school choice students almost their entire educational careers.
Jeff?
Just a quick question regarding transportation. What, what percentage of those fifty-two students are we able to transport with our own Wareham Public School Transportation Department?
I would say maybe twenty. We, we contract out for most of our runs. I, I really don't want to give you an answer until I investigate it. You know, our issue is some of our students, actually, we have quite a few that need wheelchair accessible vans. And they also have to be wheelchair accessible vans that have room for a nurse that rides with that student. And there aren't many vans that can accommodate that. So, we have to really kind of search for vendors. And that's a very difficult thing to do in the current climate because a lot of businesses have closed. There's a driver shortage, there's a monitor shortage. So, it's very difficult to find transportation companies right now. And the unfortunate part of it is companies are popping up, we're finding, that don't have the greatest transportation vehicles and are inflating their prices to literally twice to three times what we used to pay pre-COVID. So, it's, it's been a very, it's a very difficult time. I think COVID has made a lot of changes to the way that things operate.
To the superintendent, we're actually making progress with drivers. I think we should think seriously about trying to get some more vehicles that would allow us to, to prevent us from being extorted by these suboptimal companies that are just cropping up just, just to take advantage.
I agree.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One of the issues is that there's really no vehicles out there because everyone is trying to find a vehicle. That, like Melissa alluded to, like a van. You know, we might be able to find a van, but it's not going to, it's not wheelchair accessible or it's not whatever the, the child may need. So, I've had my field result trying to see what I can find used and right now, I heard nothing about, everyone's trying to find them.
Even, even if this is a solution for next year or the following year.
Oh, yeah.
We should think ahead because.
Right.
This extortion is not going to go away.
No, you, they're, they're charging anywhere from, you know, six hundred to nine hundred dollars a day.
A day, per student.
Per student.
I, I'd rather give the business to our great drivers.
Absolutely, I totally agree.
Melissa, can you talk a little bit about the educational diagnosticians that you mentioned? So, I know Mary and I were involved in that, those meetings that resulted in that. But for the benefit of everyone, what those, those new positions are, what those people are doing?
So, we have two positions that, so one has been hired since the beginning of the year. The other is in the process of being hired now because the candidate pool was not very strong. So, we have the middle high school diagnostician in place right now. She travels between the two buildings, so she has space at the high school and at the middle school. And she does all of the initial and reevaluation testing, writes the goals, attends the meetings and supports the teachers in making accommodations or if they have questions about accommodations or how they would look in a classroom. So, she's up and running and that's been successful. I think we, we just need to get the elementary person in because right now, they have not been hired yet. The posting is still up. So, we have somebody who we're interviewing that we're going, hopefully will work out, that we will put forward. But that would be the same thing, it would be the pre, basically K to four because pre-K kind of runs their own. They do a, a different type of evaluation process, so this person would be handling K to four. And the purpose of this year was kind of to feel out because we're usually heavier at the K to four in evaluations than we are at middle high. So, we figured that that person would need less grades to cover. But we're going to go through this year and kind of, we've been tracking how many evaluations each person has to do to see if it makes sense to shift that caseload or if we might need to add another person or if we think it's fine the way it is. So, this is kind of a year to, to see how this process is going to work. And we're doing that by really tracking every single evaluation that's done. If they're done in a timely manner, the quality of the evaluations, how supportive the teachers feel. And then we will move from there to see if we need to shift the caseload at all.
Okay.
It's about the same, believe it or not, about the same number of evaluations, K to four, as there are five to twelve.
Because how many, I can't do the math, but it's more grades.
Yeah.
Five to twelve, yeah. And is this person, people too that you're hiring, are they from within the districts? Or are they already familiar with our student population?
So, one of them was an internal hire. She was a, a teacher that moved into that position, applied for, interviewed and moved into that position. And I can't really speak about the other person yet because we haven't interviewed them yet.
Okay.
But they are somebody who, I know they used to work here, they don't work here now, but they used to work here.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. No one has any more questions for Melissa? All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Melissa.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is vaccination protocols. And I will defer the subject to Mr. Swett, who asked that we put this on the agenda.
So, let me first emphasize that I am speaking for myself. If my colleagues happen to agree with some of the things I say, that's great. But I don't want anybody to think that anything I say is anything but my opinion. First thing I want to say is regardless of what I say later in, in, in my comments, I agree with Dr. Vigant that the more people we have vaccinated, the safer our school environment is. I mean, that's just a scientific fact. Now, there will be people who don't like vaccinations, but I have yet to, and I've looked at a lot of data. The more people that get vaccinated, the fewer people end up in the hospital, the fewer people die, et cetera. So, I've said that, it's a true statement, but I have a lot of things to say beyond that. The second thing I would say is we don't operate in a vacuum. Just as a relatively short time ago, at the very last moment, we were told that everybody would wear masks, meaning students as well as staff, and no one was given a choice. There weren't waivers, there weren't anything, it was a mandate from the governor. My sources indicate to me that we're likely to get a mandate from the governor regarding vaccinations. That I have no, well, I guess I have some inside information, but that doesn't mean it's accurate. It's just we should be prepared for the fact that that may very well come. And it could be for staff and students or just staff. But my guess, it's not really a guess, is that the governor is waiting for the, the data that he is currently collecting. And he will, he will make a decision based on that data. Now, of course, we know data is, you know, you can sometimes have garbage in, garbage out. And we know that the data that, that we collect even in Wareham is, is clearly not necessarily complete. I think the superintendent would agree with that. Some people just don't want to give information, even if they're vaccinated, they don't want to give information. I understand all that, but the governor is likely to make a decision. People should understand that, that, once again, my opinion, as compared to things like freedom of the press, freedom of speech, lots of things that we take for granted but perhaps shouldn't, public health tends to be the greatest good for the greatest number. Which is to say, people who have, have minority views when it comes to public health tend to get crushed. And that may be a very bad thing, but that's the way public health operates. If the science seems to say one thing and it's the best for the most number of people, that generally is what happens in public health. And we should be prepared for that to happen. There, there is increasing evidence that there is a direct correlation between, and you'll be happy to hear this, Adrian, between age and hospitalization and death. So, someone like myself is much more vulnerable than someone like Adrian. In fact, there was a recent, two studies in the New York Times which basically said that if Adrian was unvaccinated, she's probably just as safe as someone who's my age unvaccinated. So, the vaccination, the correlation between vaccinations and, and morbidity and mortality is, is very clear. That made me think that the issue of protecting our students is, is less important than protecting our own staff. Frankly, I care about both. I want our staff to be healthy as well as I want our students to be healthy. I should add, I don't really want to be talking about this at all. If I had my druthers, these would be individual decisions by individual people. But we were elected to make policy and that's why we, that's why we're here and that's why we're discussing this. So, given that, and given that we have a mask mandate, we, we have a pretty safe environment for our, for our students. And what I mean by that is they are not particularly vulnerable anyway. You tend to get it and recover well. And of course, some of you are vaccinated, some of you are not, and some don't even have access to vaccinations and you still tend to recover well. Now, that is not to say that, that there aren't terrible exceptions, tragic exceptions with the multi-inflammatory disease being the most well-known. But those thankfully are very small in number. So, if we're just trying to create the safest possible environment, then our students are probably in good shape because we have a mask on every member of the staff as well as every man, member of the student body. The final comment I will make is I have talked to many people. And I have intentionally talked to people with whom I like and respect and who disagree with me. And my conclusion is that perhaps especially in a town that is so divided on this subject, it would be massively disruptive and divisive to, for the school committee to mandate vaccinations, whether it was students or staff or, or, or both. And the last thing I want to do is disrupt, disrupt the educational environment by mandating something that for some percentage of the, of the staff would be, would be extraordinarily unpopular. It may happen anyway if the governor decides to mandate it, but I will not be voting to do that. So, therefore, the question then becomes, is there anything we should do to make the environment just a little bit safer? And based on what Dr. Schwam told us tonight, we do have the ability with someone else paying for it to have people who are not vaccinated tested to make sure that they may not even realize that they're positive and they may not realize that they are vulnerable. And we could help them and do whatever the protocols are, which is of course, some level of quarantine until they're negative, et cetera, et cetera. So, it seems to me that that is, in my opinion, I restressed just my opinion. The only question I would like the school committee to address is should we have weekly testing of unvaccinated staff? And I would not be recommending that if it was going to have an impact on the school budget. But we're, we're now being told it will not. And therefore, that is something I think we should consider. I probably could argue both directions on, on this question, but I think it's a fair question to ask because as, as Mr. Brajoli brought up when, when we were talking with the chairman of the school of the public health, Dr. Vigant, we do want the safest possible environment for our kids and that could be one step that could be taken to maximize the safety. It has other implications which are perhaps a little negative. It's certainly inconvenient for the person being tested every week. But it's something I think we should consider just because we have a responsibility to consider it. Whether we decide to do it or not, I'll leave it up to the chair to decide that process.
So, first of all, I just want to agree with you that it is, I believe, our duty to create the safest environment for our students and our staff. And, and we've all worked hard to do that. As far as testing unvaccinated staff, I'm, I'm clear about the expense. So, Dr. Schwam, did you say that that would be not at our expense?
Correct.
Really?
Yes, it's because we're part of the test and stay program.
Okay.
We have, and Massachusetts has said, anyone that needs to be tested at any time can be tested.
Okay.
So, we have the capacity to offer that and there are many different ways we can test. There's pool testing, there's rapid testing, there's, they're, they're just, and we can choose amongst a number of different ways in which to do that, which will be another conversation.
Mm-hmm. Well, I was going to say, Jeff, would you agree that there's, we wouldn't be able to vote on something tonight because someone would have to come up with a process of how that would happen?
Completely agree, but I think it's a good thing to discuss to see where, where we might go.
Mm-hmm. April?
So, you had mentioned that the, the unvaccinated people would get tested, but I know it was at the, the staff or students discretion whether or not they shared their vaccination status with the school nurse. So, you could have a population of people that are presumed to be either vaccinated or unvaccinated without actual concrete evidence to either way. So, how would you go about discerning who gets tested? Is it testing at random you're proposing? Or like to discern who is tested or not if they are not willing to share their status either way?
Well, I mean, believe it or not, there's a simple answer to that question. If you choose not to share that you've been vaccinated, the assumption will be that you're not.
Okay.
I mean, literally, that's the only reasonable conclusion I think you can make. And that the people did not like to be tested and were vaccinated, they have the freedom to come forward and say, "I have been vaccinated." But we have no choice but to make the assumption they're unvaccinated if they don't provide evidence to the school nurse that they are.
And would this be something that would then have to be in a contractual addendum for the staff? That they would have to, would this have to be presented to the unions to be put in? Or how, what is the power of the, the school committee or the superintendent to, even with the, the testing for this? I'm just trying to be clear of what the procedure will be. So, how will that work? Would that have to be similar to when we had to, you know, change the, the COVID addendum to the union contract for each segment of each union? Would that have to, you know, be taken into consideration? And then if there's any, you know, pushback from any of those unions, what would, how would we proceed from there?
I think that would certainly be in question for the school attorney.
Okay.
Kevin or Mary, do you have any?
No, just my thought is, and I know that other places are doing this. In fact, a colleague of mine, her husband works for Dean College. Everyone, everyone gets tested. Because even though you're vaccinated, doesn't mean you're immune.
Right.
So, and then that way, you're not discriminating either.
Mm-hmm. It seems to me that the process of testing so many people would be daunting.
And I would talk, I would have, once I mentioned I would contact them after this meeting.
Yes.
Because obviously, I needed some information from the direction that you would choose to go and then I can gather that information from them. They didn't seem daunted by it. And I think it could be scheduled in a way that with the team that they have coming, they could probably work something out. They, they acted as though they could handle that and that wasn't against anything. There's also a way to self-test. So, they have a process where that can happen as well. So, there are a number of different elements to it and it will be the decision of the school committee and how you want to proceed. And then I can gather the information from that point.
It certainly seems that self-testing would be an option for the adults.
Correct.
Yeah.
I, I just think it's, as I mentioned in our last meeting imperative that we have an idea of how many people we're talking about. If we want to try a testing program, are we confident that we have a number right now? I know it was shared a couple of meetings ago that there was a certain percentage. It seemed to me that it was about fifty percent maybe of staff and I'm hoping that was under-reported. But, but is that what we're thinking? It's about fifty percent of staff that are, that have volunteered information that they're vaccinated right now?
Well, the number I gave them was fifty percent, just as a hypothetical.
Right, okay.
So, I included on the table in front of you, current information of people that have shared that with our school nurses. So, at the high school, right now, we have eighty-one staff or sixty-five point eight percent. At the middle school.
Sorry, Kim, I had two sheets.
Where do you have?
One was.
I don't think we've got that, Kim.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One was turning point.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, no, sorry. I didn't give you a copy of this. I have sixty-nine at the middle school. I have 69 at the middle school or 66.9. I'll go back to the high school in case you're writing this down. At the high school, we have 81 people that have shared this with the nurse. It's 65.8. At the middle school, it's 69 or 66.9. At Minnet, we have 25 people that have shared information or 41.6. And at Deccus, I have 38 staff members or 31.6. Today, I asked also about students. Right now, we know of 70 students at the high school who have been vaccinated, 37 at the middle school, no, sorry, 38 at the middle school. So those are our present numbers.
Dr. Schwam?
I also was thinking about bus drivers, cafeteria workers, custodians as well in that population.
Right, right now we do not have a nurse that has taken responsibility to claim to oversee that. But if we go to this route, then we certainly will have to ask for somebody to take over that as well as central office. We've not been able to share that because we don't have a nurse to report to.
So what would the next step be? Would it be to have Dr. Schwam report back about what that process would be after speaking with the company?
If that's what you'd like me to do, I'd be happy to do that.
Would we be able to request or ask a member of that company to come and answer any questions to a future meeting? Is that possible? Do they have representatives that could answer any of the testing questions or how they test questions or anything like that? That way, instead of having a middleman or a liaison, we could go right to the source and ask about their capacity for testing or any other questions we may have?
Well, we could do that, but I think what we're asking Dr. Schwam to do is, I mean, it's unique to Wareham, right? I mean, what this, we would be creating a process that we wanted to follow in Wareham as far as testing, who gets tested, how often?
Well, they have a company in play. They may have had something set up that they could explain has worked in districts of similar size or similar percentages of vaccination, that they may be able to provide some insight?
Okay.
If I could make a suggestion,
Sure.
Maybe what we could ask Dr. Schwam to do would be to gather information about self-testing, group testing, and then have testing with staff members from this organization. So we would have more information on how each one would work that we could share with you. We would also ask about a Zoom link. I think we might be able to have them Zoom easier than make a trip to Wareham. That might be something that would be more appealing to them to do. So they could ask, you could ask questions through that. And then we could also contact legal.
Okay, yes. And as far as vaccination status, is that an open question? I mean, are you still receiving responses? Or do you believe that you've received all the responses you'll receive?
I had considered sending an email directly to staff asking them to please share the information with the nurse, but I wanted to hold till after this meeting. So I certainly am willing to do that. I also think then I need to have a conversation with the nurse because we do have a number of people, as Dr. Schwam brought up, that have not been given that ability to share their status. So we would, I will ask a nurse if they would be willing to oversee those groups of people. And what I did, I just collected, if you remember, I collected this information on September 21st and reported. I collected it today and reported. And I had a change of 21 people added to the list. So a few more people had shared the information.
Jeff?
So just for my edification and maybe for others, what is the current protocol for someone who finds out that they are positive? And is there any difference between the protocol for someone who is positive, unvaccinated, and someone who is positive vaccinated?
To my understanding, there's no difference in protocol. Dr. Schwam, am I, if you're positive, you are excluded from school, whether you be a staff member or a student, until you reach X number of days.
Are you asking about being positive and vaccinated?
Yes.
It's the same protocol because you still have the capacity to spread it?
I understand that.
But if you're vaccinated and a close contact, that protocol is different.
Okay, so you're vaccinated, you have a close contact, you are not sent home.
Right.
But if you're unvaccinated and close contact, you are sent home?
Unless you have test and stay. Yes.
Okay. I was thinking about Mary's comment about some organizations are simply testing everybody. And if the protocol for someone who is, happens to test positive, and we know there are breakthrough infections, they're relatively rare, but they certainly happen, we would be catching those breakthrough infections by testing everybody. It's not costing us anybody. Everybody is equally inconvenienced. It's just something for us to think about.
In the interim, should we be talking to the union?
I believe for us, we'll talk to the attorney first and go from there.
Okay.
Kim, would you agree? Does anyone have anything to add to that discussion? Jeff, are you?
I'm also, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so next meeting, we'll have this back on the agenda, and Dr. Schwam will be just talking, and we'll invite the CIC, someone from CIC. Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is obsolete furniture.
Included in your packet was a list of furniture equipment from the high school, the district, and east. I would ask you to please declare all items obsolete.
Does anyone have any questions about that list? April?
So on the list, I know that it looks like there are some things that say flat out that they're broken. Some things do not. Things that don't specifically say that they're broken, that they're just outdated. Do those get attempted to be sold to recruit money to the district? Do we donate those, like the art bins or enameling kiln, things like that? Or are they not able to be redistributed in other, like, community organizations?
If there's anything that is usable for other groups, then we certainly look to share that after it's been deemed obsolete. If not, then we discard.
So how do we share, how do we find that out? Like, how do we put that out there to, like, say, some of the after-school programs or like to other organizations in town that could hypothetically use any of these things? How do we put that information out there for the things that are salvageable?
Well, if there was something that was of interest that we thought could be usable to a different group, then we would make contact and say, "We have this, is this something that you'd be interested in?"
Okay, thank you.
April, just so you know, that was done, like I say, when Minnet was shut down. There were many items that were offered to community groups. Many, there was kitchen equipment that was sold, so it has been done.
Okay, I was just curious how we put the information out there, so, thank you.
Is there any other questions? If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Next on the agenda is substitute increase pay.
The superintendent handed you a paper tonight with the substitute pay on it. So we're having a very difficult time getting subs. So we took some comparisons of schools in the area, and we're asking that for a permanent intimate sub to be raised from $97 to $120. A regular sub teacher from $92 to $105. A permanent intimate para-professional sub from $87 to $95. And a regular sub para from $87 to $92. Anyone have any questions? Any questions? April?
I'm just happy to see this. As a former para-sub, I think that the work that they do and get through, they're definitely a necessity. And it's nice to see the comparison of surrounding towns and that this would put us in a competitive place to hopefully get people to help our kids.
We hope so, that's the intent.
Jeff, did you have something?
So do we have even a ballpark estimate of the impact this would have on the budget?
About $60,000.
Thank you.
That's a guesstimate as of today, so.
More than good enough, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? That was my question, my only question. All right, if no one has any other questions, we'll ask for a motion to approve the increase.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Thank you. Next on the agenda is capital plan review. So I did ask to have this on the agenda, and the reason that I asked is that I had asked the superintendent for a report. And then really, I wanted to get input from the whole committee. So that's how I, the only way that I'm able to do that is to put it on the agenda. What I had asked for was a report of past, present, and future capital projects. So I guess I'm just asking for the rest of the committee, what you would like to see on a capital plan report. If you, you know, if there's something different that you're looking for before she goes ahead with Christine.
So on those past, present, and projected reports, would they be, as long as they're able to be, I think, line itemed a little bit specifically, what, or per building? Instead of like heating with a lump sum, like if you have things per building?
It would be per project, so it would be per building.
Right, and I would suggest that, you know, if we had an estimated amount of what the project was, to also have that on. And also, if the funding source is known at the time, whether we're going to bring it to the town, or if we have funding within a grant or some other source of funding, anything over $25,000 still has to go to capital. They just, if it's a funding source that is not, you know, from the town's funds, then we need to let them know that. I also would like to see on there, I don't know if you'd like to, but somehow determine the need or the urgency of each project. So in a prior district, I had a capital plan, five-year capital plan, and we ticked and tied off the ones that we could, depending on the urgency of the, you know, if there's an emergency, that's different. But if some things would be pushed off to the next year because the town is allowing us X amount of dollars, we have X amount of dollars from another source besides the town, we can only do three, then we'd push them out to the next year. So.
And sometimes projects that you, you know, they might get dropped three years in a row, you know?
Right, exactly. It all depends on the funding and the urgency of the project.
And the funding source could certainly change
Absolutely.
from what you expected to be to what it actually is in the end.
And do we look out three to five years in the future, basically, or is there a number?
Well, I'd have to work with facilities. And, you know, we could project out, probably start with three years, and then as time goes on, add to it. Because like you said, Joyce, something that we anticipate doing in year three, we might have to push down to year five, depending on the circumstances surrounding, how much the project costs, what building it's at, and the funding source. So that would be my suggestion.
Okay. Does anyone else have any thoughts on that?
I just have a question.
Sure.
Is it possible to also put, what you might anticipate is just to keep maintenance costs as capital? Or is that a separate issue completely?
Well, anything over $25,000 would be considered capital. Maintenance is day-to-day, so that's, I would put that on a capital project.
And so once this is created, it would just be an ongoing document?
I would say so, yes. Just, you know, it needs to be created and start from now and going forward.
Okay. And so while we have you here and we're talking about reporting, can we talk about ESAR reporting?
Yes. I expect at the next meeting that I'll be reporting out on ESAR I funds that has been spent and ESAR II funds to date that have been spent.
Okay. And are you able to report not just the total amount that's been spent, but what?
The details?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. I might lump some together, like if it's all PPE or if it's all whatever, whatever the case may be. I'll put it in categories. And then Jeff had also asked about the $500,000 that, from town meeting, that we receive for projects, so I can report out on that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions about reporting or? I just thought of something else and then I completely forgot. All right, never mind. It'll come back to me.
I'm sure you'll think of something.
Okay, so that will be going forward, thank you.
Yep. I don't know if I'll have that capital plan by the 28th, but probably not.
Okay.
All right, but the other ones I will.
All right.
All right?
Oh, I'm sorry, I do remember what I asked. I know that I had asked, maybe it was Kevin about it, because I know that he's on the Budget Advisory Committee. But as far as the budget reporting that will be done or the budget requests that we will receive from each school.
Yes.
I had just talked to him about the format, like if each school could present in the same format, because they all do such a good job of presenting, you know, their school. But sometimes it's in a different format, and they give the information in different ways. And I just thought if it was in the same format-
Yeah, I think that Kevin had mentioned that he was hoping that it would be in the same PowerPoint that we used last year.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Well, I had mentioned that we're trying to look for a common template.
Yeah.
That you'd work on a common template that the schools could report out on. So Joyce is saying we can compare apples to apples across the different schools.
Okay, I think I understand.
As far as the class size?
Oh, yeah, all of that, all of that will be on, will we do the budget presentation early December with the PowerPoint?
Right, right. So I'm not implying that they all, they all do such a good job with, and they give us all that information, but it's in a different, it's all in a different format.
Some are like pie charts, some are graphs, some are whatever. I think they're asking for everything to just be uniform between all three.
Yeah, we can take a look at that.
Okay, sure. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for asking that question.
Anything else?
That's it, that was what I forgot.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the report of the superintendent.
Thank you. We have no gifts to vote on for tonight, so I would ask you to please approve the bills and payroll warrants as listed in the newsletter.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
Thank you. I have shared a draft of the Turning Points Possible Agreement. We still are working between Turning Points and the school district, but I did add several items that were requested the last time, so I just wanted to update the committee. And I hope that I will bring this to you in the very, very near future for your approval.
Anyone have any questions? Is there not a monthly amount done here?
I did not include the monthly amount. I can include that for you the next time I bring
Okay, okay.
the utilities. And that's just historical, that we collect in the business office on all our utilities that we attached.
Okay.
Okay. The final thing that I would share is the town has asked to have the multi-service center- center for senior citizens, so the school central office is actively exploring moving to east. We are looking at what needs to be repaired for this move, and we're in process of doing that, so we will know more later. Questions?
Is that at school expense, or is the town gonna help with that?
We understand that the town will be providing some assistance to us.
They could use the space, is what you're saying?
They want the space in the multi-service center desperately.
At least help us out and give it up.
I'm sure they will, I'm sure they will.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
No one have, Jeff?
Just back to the Turning Point draft lease, or agreement, or whatever. Point number four, Turning Point will be responsible for maintaining and cleaning the space they occupy. So there, the, I'm not talking damage, there's a leak in the roof. Is, who's responsible for fixing that?
I would assume it would be Turning Point, because they're occupying the space.
So I think it needs to be a little clearer.
Yeah, I would think that a tenant wouldn't be responsible for that.
They absolutely can be, but you're right, that there's a, there's a concept called triple net lease. Basically, it says, you get the building and you repair it, anything that happens, it's your responsibility. We don't want to hear about it, and if you don't fix it, you know, well, you're violating the term of the lease. So I think it needs to be clearer than this draft is, because when I read things like maintaining and cleaning the space they occupy, that doesn't include the roof, in my opinion.
Okay.
Thank you.
And if you have any other suggestions, please let me know, because we're still working through this, drafting an agreement.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, Mary.
So going back to east, do we have any sort of timeline on how long we think that would take?
To move us?
Yeah.
We would like to get there sometime in, at the first of the year.
Okay.
Not tomorrow.
I was gonna say, that's not gonna happen.
On the plus side, I'm glad that that building will be getting used.
Well, yes, and I guess I would also point out to the committee that we have expenses from occupying central office. We also have expenses at east. So when you look at the combination of what we have in the LEA budget, we have, it's not going to cost the district money for us to move into east, because we're not going to be maintaining central office either. As an example, in utilities, we have in the line item budget twenty-eight thousand at central office, and we have forty-three hundred at east. Now, mind you, there's not a lot going on at east, but when you would combine those two, we have thirty-two thousand dollars in the LEA budget. So we're not, this isn't going to tax the LEA budget, is my point.
Do you have any square footage comparisons?
I know that east is approximately fourteen thousand fifty-seven square feet. I do not know what we occupy at central office.
April?
It was answered, so we're fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, one more question.
Sorry, Mary.
So does the night program still happen in the multi?
It does.
So what would happen with that?
We're exploring what options we have that would be available to the night school.
Okay.
So they would also be vacating?
Yes, yes. The, from what I understand, most places will be vacating the multi-service center.
Okay. Anyone else? I just have one question, either for you, Dr. Shephard, or Dr. Schwam. I noticed that there were openings for Career Pathways Committee, and I'm just curious what that is.
Okay, so the strategic plan has a few areas that we felt we wanted to help grow, and so through Title I, II, and IV funding, as a result of how they, how they're configured, we were able to create three different committees. One is the Social Emotional Learning Committee, the second is Modern Teacher Professional Development Committee, and the third is the Community Career Pathway Committee. And so that was the last one to be posted. The other two have been approved with the people beginning as soon as they get notified, that they've been approved. So basically, what we're going to do is look at career program and certain career pathways that the vocational technical school doesn't offer, because then that, that leaves us sort of a clean line, where we can go and look at ways in which we can foster career growth for students while in high school. So it's a committee of high school people who will look at what we currently offer, what we have to offer, what they would like to offer, and figure out how to help kids get where they want to go.
Okay, well, good. I look forward to hearing more about it.
Yeah, it's a long, it'll be some time in that, you know, we have ways to go, but this year we'll be planning.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is the report of the school committee. First is the elementary school update. So we will turn to Mr. Swett.
So much to my surprise, in my inbox, there was an email from the architectural firm asking me to sign a certificate of substantial completion. I was both happy and surprised to get it, and I immediately went over and happened to be there when the superintendent was there, and our, and our project manager said, "No, no, 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 you don't want to sign that, because we're not quite there yet." So needless to say, I didn't. What is the status? We're probably a couple of weeks away from that. The school does look great, but there's some testing of things like the sprinkler system and the emergency system, and we unfortunately discovered that the wiring for the, for the emergency lighting was done incorrectly, which is a rather important thing. So that was a not insignificant change order that Kim and I approved when we were over there. Fortunately, we literally found out about it minutes before Kim and I got there, so we were able to jump on it, because there's no choice, we have to do that work. We don't know exactly how much it's gonna cost, but it's not gonna be cheap, because at this point, all that kind of work is done in overtime. So that's, that's probably the biggest change order that's hanging up and could easily take a week or so. I hope they've already started it. But bottom line is, we're having, the only, the major issue still is furniture. We're having a meeting soon.
Oh, furniture meeting, I think.
Next week, next.
Yeah, next week.
Thursday, I think.
Which I hope will get some, get some good news. That is, you should understand, unrelated to the quote substantial completion. There is a legal definition of substantial completion. It basically has to do with how much money has been spent. Ninety-nine, if ninety-nine percent of the budget has been spent, it's considered substantially complete. And there are other, there's another definition. We don't meet either one of those definitions, so I won't be signing that certificate. And hopefully, we'll get some good news about the furniture next week, and we have a full meeting of the school building committee this coming Monday, and hopefully, we'll have some more updates. But, you know, this is just sort of end of a project, normal stuff, and it, and I can't wait for the community to get into the school, so they can see what an extraordinary achievement has been, has been accomplished, thanks to their support.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions about the new school? All right, I did see that, Dr. Shephard, you put a letter out to parents this week about planning for the opening.
Right. Right now, our target opening is the day we return from the holiday vacation. We're going to have several dry runs between the time we take occupancy to when we break for vacation. We intend on taking students up. We would like parents to practice driving through. We're going to be bringing buses in and out, so we can practice where buses will line up. I know that the elementarys have been working hard on plans, and we'll be giving more and more information out as it comes, as it becomes closer. Mrs. Chandler is also planning a Zoom meeting, or a Google Meet meeting, excuse me, sometime the first week of November. The information is on the district website. That, we'll be happy to answer questions. And we have a major shipment of desks coming in on October twenty-eighth, so we're quite excited about that.
That's good to hear.
Will there be a date for the public to tour the new building once, before the children occupy it? I know I've been asked several times by people if that's in the works, or how that's going to work. Will it be appointment? Will it be open house? Will it be mask required? And like, is there gonna be a window for that?
Yes.
I just had several questions asked to me, so I figured I would ask them.
Yes. So one of the things that we feel a little bit strongly about is, we have not been able to bring our teachers or our staff through the building, and we keep telling them and they see pictures. So one of the first groups that we're going to be bringing in will be our teachers and staff. We then want our students to come in, but we also want our parents and the public to see the building, because we're so proud of and so grateful for their support. So we have a list of people that we will be bringing through the building, and the community is certainly in that group.
Okay, thank you.
And it will be masked.
I figured as much, but I just wanted to make sure it was noted.
Yeah. And I will say that we, Dr. Schwam and I were on a Zoom meeting with the commissioner earlier this week, and there's been four schools that have met the eighty percent and are now maskless. We are not one of them, and we will remain masked until further notice.
Four out of three hundred and fifty.
Yep, four or five, I think you said.
Yeah.
Really? I heard about one on the news, but wasn't that many?
And they removed masks from everybody as a result of that eighty percent.
Yeah.
Interesting. I'm surprised it's so few.
Okay, so under school committee, report of the school committee, this kind of goes back to the conversation about vaccine protocols. We have this policy on COVID-related issues. And I did ask Kevin this question earlier, because he's the chair of the Policy Review Committee. In the policy, it does say that it will be in effect until, till it's not, until it's suspended. And it does read, "Such suspension of policy shall expire upon the end of the emergency as declared by the governor." So the state of emergency has ended by the governor. That doesn't necessarily mean that I think this policy should be suspended, I don't. So I guess I'm just looking for what the committee wants to do. If you want to put this on the next agenda, and we can vote to extend it to the end of the school year, regardless of the state of emergency. I'm just, I know that it was in the packet, so, you know, I know that everyone has seen it, so that's why I'm just asking you what you all think about that.
When did the state of emergency end?
June?
It was, I think, June fifteenth. I looked it up earlier today, I thought it was June fifteenth.
I mean, maybe the wording unless, till otherwise specified by the Board of Education, whereas masks and vaccine thing, the rates are still in effect, either hitting the eighty percent or remaining masked. So I guess until guidance from the state dictates otherwise would be my suggestion. Would, that way you're not held to a concrete end date?
Well.
But it still covers the scope of the pandemic, which isn't technically over.
Right, right. I guess I would say, I mean, guidance from the state is broad, there's so much guidance from the state. If we could just extend it to the end of this school year, and then if we so choose, we can, you know, hopefully, we won't have to, but, you know, we could just extend it to the next school year. You know, if you'd be open to that. We could put it back on the agenda for a vote next year, next meeting.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Yeah.
Is this going to the policy subcommittee? Is it in the, is it in the?
It's not right now.
We have a meeting on the twentieth.
Okay.
Do you want to just follow that protocol, or?
We could.
Yeah, we could put this on.
Okay.
Just to get the opinion of the policy subcommittee.
Yeah, and then it can come back with all the other policies.
Yeah, that has real value.
Okay. All right, let's do it that way then. Okay. And then the only other thing under report of the school committee is something that just came up, and it's, it's a scheduling thing. I just wanted to let everyone know that, we've been notified that the room that we normally meet in is not going to be available for four meetings, two in March, one in April, and one in May. So we'll be rescheduling those meetings after a conversation with WCTV. It really is easiest for them to broadcast from that room. We appreciate all the extra work that they've already been doing, so we will be rescheduling. I just got the dates late this afternoon, so we'll have a revised schedule at our next meeting, but I just wanted to let you know about that. All right. Does anyone else have any business to discuss that was not otherwise planned? All right, then I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.